...for new funding initiatives. And we also, as administrators, put in items we feel are going to be must-dos. That's what the blue represents. Based on our current trend, we anticipate having to budget an additional $20,000 in electrical utility expense. There are some service contract increases in the IT department related to web filtering and some other things. I think Mr. Omen's aware of that. The increase in telecommunications contract costs, you know, one of the, we are having an invitation for RFP on the streets now for our telecommunications services and internet, and that includes upgrading our phone systems in our schools and the school one office, some of which are woefully outdated. And we think we're going to come out pretty well on that. And at this point in time, until we know for certain, we budgeted an additional annual cost of $20,000 for that, and that would include replacing the phone system. The other option is to do it with capital money, but this is how we're going at this point in time. Implementation of the electronic maintenance, electronic records maintenance system, that's something that has been in a work in progress for a bit of time. We budgeted some money for that for this year, and as we've gone further in the process, I think Ms. Hobbs has realized there's going to be, from some of the people she's worked with, there's going to be an increase in that above and beyond what we have already factored in of 6282. We know our workers' compensation rates are going to increase because of some reallocations, some re, lack of term. They categorize different positions different ways, which affects the rate that they apply to for workers' compensation purposes. We've already been made aware of that, so that's in. Something we've not done for a number of years, and as we continue to drill our budget down further, this becomes even more important, is to allow a CPI, Consumer Price Index, increase to non-health insurance insurances, purchase services and supplies. Otherwise, we keep eroding our buying power due to the effects of inflation in those areas, and you see those totals for there. The additional cost above and beyond, you know, we have a payroll budget that includes three speech-language pathologists. We've been unable to fill two and a half of those positions, and we've had to contract them out. And we're going to exceed our total cost for providing that service is going to exceed this year what we have budgeted on the payroll side for those three positions. So in the event that continues next year and the year after, we've captured the additional cost above and beyond what we have budgeted in payroll to provide that system, to provide that service via contract service. That's the 3573 there. And increase our allocation for copier lease, pending the new contract, which bids will go out for that this year. We anticipate an increase in that cost as well. So those are the kind of must-dos. We need to do those and account for those.
And on the budget committee, we had four staff members.
We did.
We had a bus driver and custodian, one of our nurses.
And teacher.
We did.
And all participated in the budget process. We sent out a list of what we say not wish, but needs, and then we ranked them, and then from there, because of the weather, we did have to cancel one of the budget meetings, but we based this information on those rankings for the most part, what we kept and also what we needed. So if you'll see, you got the VPI program, which required local match, would cost us an extra, almost $58,000. We kept that in. If we were to keep the current nursing staff at seven, that's what that would cost us, I think, an extra 64.
Man, the difference you see in the two years for these is that the required local match for the VPI program will go up in the fiscal year 2019-20 because of the composite index change. That's the difference in those two. And the additional funding required is, the foundation currently funds 50% of the cost of the nurse program. They're going to drop that to 25% for fiscal year 18, 19 and none in the second year. That's why you see the variance. That's accounting for the fact we're still getting some funding from the foundation there. We're not getting any there. And so in order to keep things as they currently are, that's the additional funds we have to come up with to do that.
And I know we've made efforts with the boys home. Have we, it's also to all efforts with the foundation?
Yes.
Regarding that funding as far as meeting with them and the impact it would have?
There's been knowing other meetings with them because last, not this past October, the previous October, they said it's done.
And they wouldn't entertain any further discussion?
No, they want no other, they wanted no other further discussion.
And is that a joint program with Covington?
Yes.
Is that going to impact Covington as well?
Yes. And they'll have to figure out the funding for their part of the nursing part as well. So I have talked to Ms. Steve Johnson about our, where possible plans could be, not that they're going to be that way, but possible plans that they were, that they're aware of it as well. So I will have a meeting with the educational foundation, the wing, the committee, educational committee of the foundation. I think it's next Tuesday, and I'll talk about it again.
Yeah, I think we should at least.
I'd be more happy to do that, but.
Approach it, what it means for us and.
Yep. And Ms. Steve Johnson will be there as well.
Okay.
And if you'd like, I can certainly set a meeting up. Any of you want to like to talk to Ms. Donovan about it?
We can talk about it off-line, but I'm not interested in that.
That'd be fun. Okay, that'd be great. Love to. All right. Yep, absolutely love to do that.
So I do have a question, the additional funding required to retain the nurse program at current staff. Is that everyone's first needs?
All seven, yes.
All seven. Are you going to use our?
Our nurse coordinator and our nurse administrative assistant.
Now, the nurse coordinator and the nurse secretary also are partially funded by Covington because they provide services to Covington, whereas our school nurses are fully funded. Our 50%, we fund that fully. So that assumes we pick up the full cost of that and we have the full benefit at that point.
So Covington will go into assuming any of that costs?
That we'd have to pick it up.
We'd have to pick up 100% of that.
And that would be, then they would only work with us at that point. We're no longer working with Covington.
Yeah, as we'll say, just the way this is set up, so if you're looking at all the things that you would like to keep, but being with us is kind of like the give and take piece of it. So if we'll get back to.
Yeah. If you go down, you'll see volunteer activity sponsors, a slight increase in that for 2,500.
Due to the step increase there, based on our step scale.
Yeah. And chime into Mr. Rice on that. Additional allocation for health insurance premiums, we put in approximation number of 100,000. That's certainly adjustable. Increased technology hardware replacement budget, 15, a little over 15,000. We had a long conversation about hard to fill phone positions bonuses. We decided to take that out. This was a big topic of conversation the last two days in Richmond about teaching shortages and some of the plans they plan on doing, which might help. One of the things we started talking about last year was do we pay for licenses? And we were all over the board. Some gave me some. So we're being consistent about paying what's required for the job that we pay for. A teacher license is $25 every five years, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
So it's not a significant amount, but that picks up and covers all licenses. Capital equipment replacement budget makes department additional 4,000. One of the things we'll see is we're not increasing adding that fifth TTR position like we originally spoke in our 2020 plan, but what we'll do, have done is increase the contracts of the TTRT position from 200 to 210 days. That was a cost of 10 and a half thousand dollars. Our TTRTs work from, they work 200 days from July 1st through June 3rd, so they can flex some days there because sometimes during the summer, we need them to come in and work on certain things. Then we took out, we had talked about increased stipends for speech pathologists, but if we decide to do that, we've already got that money captured up above.
In the 35,000.
Yeah. So we have that captured, and that still could be a possibility, so we can steal one from somebody else to make, pay them more. Of course, we can bring it back to the board. We had a long conversation about increasing the teacher assistance hours from seven to seven and a half. That was approximately 55,000 we took back out. This was another big discussion today, Mr. Vaughn in Richmond, about substitutes. And everyone's having a hard time getting substitutes, and so we were looking at possibly increasing the pay slightly for them. There was a request to convert the 10-month Mountain View Elementary School custodian to a 12-month position. For us new on the board, for those who've been here, two years ago, what we did is we added custodian back, the groundkeeper, that relieved Mountain View from doing the grounds, so they already have that person over there. We, we were talking about with people who've retired and resigned early, we provided them $500. We took that out. I already told you, we took the additional TTRT position out. We are going to, originally, we're going to increase the behavioral analyst position from two to 210. Dr. Heath has found some additional funding in her early childhood program, we'll do that. So we plan on increasing that contract. We, here's another loss. We have a career council that we share with the fear followers divisions, and Dabney pays for that. They're no longer going to pay for that. They asked us to come up with $15,000 to keep that. We took that out. There was a request to add one more additional assistant principal at CMS. Took that out. Let's see, provide supplement for administrative assistant payroll position. Took that out. Provide for administrative program support. We, we are looking to groom our own administrators. We've already started it. Mr. Vaughn, in the new program, how many, we talked to four, right?
Five.
Five. So we got five people are interested to become administrators, and we were going to put some money into papers and classes in there. We took that out. There was a request to increase athletic funding out in high school. Took that out. There was a request to add two teacher assistant positions at CES. Took that out. And there was also one I skipped over at SCS. Took that out. I, because I jumped it as the board moved on. Yeah, create department tier stipends at CMS. Took that out. Create team leader stipends at CMS. Took that out. Add one teacher assistant principal, assistant, teacher assistant position at SCS. Took that out. Add one director student services position in central office. Took that out. Add one second grader at CES. Took that out. Make part-time librarian position at the two elementary schools into a full-time. Took that out. Add one attendance position at CMS. Took that out. And I already mentioned those others. Create new office assistant position. You start.
I have a question. I saw that there was a request for those two, two teachers assistants at Callahan. We talked about that, you and I had talked about that. There's that class that has a large number.
One of the things we're looking at is reallocating our computer lab aids that can be used for a thing like that. And I know Ms. Newsfall and Mr. Vaughn are working on that, and how we can allocate our aids to cover that.
Well, I think that's something we definitely need to address, maybe even address it in this year. I mean, we.
Is that the same thing as they add the one second grade teacher at CES?
That would be the same thing. If we had the teacher, we would have that.
Because there's one right now?
There's one.
There's one, but we're like right at the brink of having too many students for one.
23, which is where we can be. We've accepted four out of district students. We've had some conversation with them, Miss Mogan about that as well. And we recognize, I want to talk to the teachers. I talked to the teacher about it, Ms. Smith. And one of the, the advantage of having a smaller school is you have that individuality and that law of the close work. But as we, as some of our, as Callahan and Sharon, they would continue to lose students, at some point, we'd have to go down to one teacher. And what happens is those same students then travel from class to class to class to class, and you only have one teacher, and they're always together, which can be an interesting combination. Now, Mountain View, you don't have that issue because if these four kids are together, you can move, you can disperse them throughout the other classes. So we'll monitor that. Who knows? I mean, suddenly in May, we may have four more students who've been there, and we have to put another teacher in there. So we're going to continue to monitor, we're looking for the aide to go in there and assist. Had long conversation with both Ms. Mogan and Ms. Smith about it. Right now, now, this isn't for the holidays, I'm supposed to, but they figured, they thinks they got some things under control, so.
Because I know we had the, we had the similar project, problem a couple of years ago with Sharon, and we put a, an aide in there.
Okay.
So that's kind of the standard.
I'll, I'll check with Ms. Mogan and Ms. Smith, maybe tomorrow, if not Monday, to find out how things are going out there.
All right.
Thank you. Yep. Fair enough. Okay, so what we have, if you'll take a look, what we have in need in our budget, we're short of approximately 610,000 in our next fiscal year, and then approximately 1.7 in year two of biennium. So when we took a look at the whole overall budget was, whenever we keep in this year the operating budget, we know we need to keep it in the following year budget. So what we did was, and this was all of us on the administrative team, we brainstormed programs. We had just about every program we have offered in Allegheny County public schools plus the cost of the program, and then we looked down to see what programs do we need to remove so that our budget would bounce, not just in the first year, but also in the second year. Now, we have four additional pieces of funding, and I'll let Mr. Rice talk about the first four.
Fortunately, for the next biennium, the BRS rates that we pay for our professional staff are going to decline slightly. And that's going to result, and this is based on our current year's budget, budgeted payroll positions, that will result in a decrease in our BRS contribution of almost 77,000. Now, this does not include any impact that may be in effect for our non-professional staff, and that's done by a localized actuarial study, which we'll have by the end of this month. Based on their historical projections, I don't expect there to be much change on that either way, and we'll have to refine that once those numbers are out. This is all set by the state, whereas again, our non-professional staff are set by an actuarial study done just for our school division. We've put in the savings, you know, currently in our expenditure budget, we have 410,000 budgeted for capital outlay, and for many years, that typically would become part of our fund balance at the end of the year because we didn't expend it. And that money, as Mr. Rice had noted earlier, was used to fund the bond issuance that the county had done on our behalf for the renovation of the high school. And we make our last payment on that prior to June 30th. So we'll have that 410,000 budgeted on the expenditure side with no expenditures to apply to it, so we can capture that as a savings, as an offset to the negative variance we have at the moment. Our replacement benefit, 174,000 includes, it compares where we are currently in our staffing with those wages for people that have come in mid-year or whatever, annualized for the full year. And it includes comparing that to what we currently have budgeted for payroll. And after the budget is finalized in March, we'll have other retirements and resignations that take place during that time. And some of the people that replace these positions are paid at a lower rate. We have one position that's, was budgeted for full-time and affected the first year has gone to part-time. So all those replacement benefits are captured in that total of 174,000. Again, that's comparing where we are currently is like December 26th to what was budgeted for payroll in this year's budget. And then we, you want to take?
I said, I should've said the first three. We are looking to reduce two positions. Ms. Newsfall, where?
One is a middle school position, and we've already had a resignation, and just will not be a replacement. And the other is a special, one element to special education position.
Okay, and this is based on our numbers that we looked at. Again, remember, looking at positions, we're not looking at people.
And you're looking at two for fiscal year 18, 19, and an additional two for fiscal 19, 20. That's why you see the difference in the amount.
That's correct. Eliminate part-time, we have a part-time ESL slash reading teaching position at AHS. We would, in the second year, we would eliminate that position. We would maintain it for one more year. We've already spoke about capping the funding for dual enrollment, early college scholarship, early college scholars, Jackson River Government School, so we've maintained that cap. We kept funding for JRTC, which we've already spoken about. We would reduce technology hardware expenditures because of the VPSA reduction in the second year. We eliminate the nurse coordinator and the secretary position in the second year for a total savings of 87,477.
And that's net, I'm assuming we'll pay another staff member a supplement to serve as a coordinator position?
And that coordinator position would only handle the medical issues.
Right.
All the paperwork, all the reports would be handled by our nurse, person in charge of nurse, Dr. Heath.
Shoot, my gracious.
No, Fred would sign back, he's smart.
I have a real quick question. Elimination of the part-time ESL at Allegheny High School. Why are we waiting a year for that? We're not using it now.
We're using it now as a reading position, and so we do have some of those options. The difference is that's a person in that position versus the position, and maybe that person who's only doing it part-time would leave, okay? But we, for another year, I wouldn't say, ideally, I'd want to keep that position because it's a reading position, and it's working with our reading. You know, we could, if we decide, when I get down further, that might help explain a little bit what we are going to talk about. Eliminate, now, go back up to the nurse position. I've been in several counties. I've been blessed to have a nurse coordinator or a secretary for that position, and I, there have been good positions. But if I have to pick and choose between eliminating a teacher or a central office position, I want one nurse in every building, even though some of them are running part-time. We can handle the administrative information up in here. Any positions that we have spoken about tonight, we have notified any of the people that could possibly be in those positions two years down the road. I didn't think it was very fair not to notify them. I'll thank Mr. Vaughn for notifying, that if the conversation came out tonight, they didn't know anything about it. The next one I don't like saying is eliminate the school bus purchases two years down the road. This has been another conversation in Richmond, talking about putting unsafe buses on the road. Maybe on some of the flatter areas, it might be okay, but on our, our areas of our roads, if you haven't driven all those back roads, we want to make sure our students are safe.
That actually was taken out of a prior budget several years ago, too.
Yeah.
We might want to talk about that, Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, 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 fair enough. Eliminate teacher assistant positions. We'd eliminate two this year and two the following year. We currently have one resignation or retirement, so we do have one opening. We may anticipate one between now and the end of the year, so it would be, again, a position versus a person. Now, you'll notice, we intend to ask the county funding in the second year of the biennium of 250,000 in additional funding, which puts us back to the request that was made back in FY 2015 level.
What they actually funded this at?
When I first came here, we had surplus, and I don't remember the exact amount, 245,000 that I recommended to return to the county because we didn't need it. Two years ago, last year, they asked us if we could absorb 100, or it was the year before 100,000, and we did that for them. Of course, they helped us last year with new tech of 50,000. We've agreed in this budget to pick up the cost of the VPI out of our budget. I really appreciate working with Mr. Lanford and our board of supervisors. We are blessed, and I listened to the superintendent talk about the infighting that goes on between the school board members and the board of supervisors. We do not have that. We work together. I've already gone over this, our potential budget with Mr. Lanford, so he was aware of everything. And so we'll continue to work on that. And I'm going to get back to this 250,000 in a minute. Eliminate, we have substitute custodian position at the garage. We would eliminate that position. That, we say at the garage, they fill in throughout the division. When they're not, when they're not filled in, they go down to the garage and help out down there.
Just the second year.
Yeah, the second year. Yep, the second year. Thank you. Eliminate, now, we do provide about 14,000 to the athletic fund. We, we are talking about the second year, eliminating that, which means that the high school activity athletic department would have to fund everything but salaries and transportation.
And the swimming pool rental?
Swimming pool, right. We still pay for it.
We would still pay.
Swimming pool.
I thought, we didn't do that after we did the, we switched the stuff up in Mountain View, I thought that we wouldn't even see.
So that's cost, I have to go back and look at the exact amount.
They pay us, they pay us a fee for rental slash custodial services, so we get a check from them each month, and we kept it separate instead of netting it out.
They wanted to keep it. Rather than bounce out, for some reason, they wanted it on the books to show that they were charging for the rent and then what they were paying for the services, rather than just the whitewashing.
But with this, we obviously must be paying the 13,900 and over and above.
No, that's going to the, that's going to high school.
That's going to high school athletic.
Not to, not to the, not to the Y.
Oh, okay.
All right.
So how much is our rent to?
4,000 for the pool.
We still pay 4,000 for the pool?
Yes.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay.
But how much do they pay us each month?
I don't know that number.
Yeah, if, if, if I recall, it's pretty much over. I have to go back and look.
I thought it was a wash. I thought that was how we agreed.
No, we agreed is that they would pick up the cost of whatever custodial services or things that are needed.
It's a pretty significant amount that we get each month for them in rent custodial service.
But, but I thought the swimming pool thing, I thought that was one of the things that was a wash when we, when we moved them over to Mountain View.
Now, what, what was talked about, okay, now I have to go back and pull my notes off, and I don't remember everything as well as I thought I did, because I got something I need to talk to you about afterwards that you asked me about before, is what we talked about was going to be a wash, where we'd pick up all the custodial services and everything else, okay? And they would pick up, we would pop the pool, but they wanted some documentation in their book, that they were charging us for the pool, and they would pay us for it. So if we go back and look for all the days between the cafeteria service and different things, I think we probably are getting more money than we're paying for the pool, but I have to go back and look.
Well, let's make sure of that.
I'm pretty sure we already looked at it, but we'll look at it. We'll get the numbers on that.
I can tell you that before you leave soon.
Would the elimination of the pool rental affect the ability of the high school to have the swimming pool?
Oh, absolutely.
We're not, we're not eliminating the pool rental. Just, yes, that stays in.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, that's separate, yeah, yeah. But if we limit, if we decide to eliminate that money from the budget.
Yeah, I was, that's what I was wondering.
Oh, yeah, no, that would kill.
Well, my understanding was when we moved the YMCA over to Mountain View, that part of the thing was, hey, we're giving you this great new space, all this stuff, and you're no longer going to charge us for using the pool.
But you're right. But I said, what happened was, and I have to go check my notes, was that they wanted this information on the books so they could show separate things, for whatever reason, for accounting purposes. So when it came down to the cost of custodians, toilet paper, cafeteria workers, it was going to be more, so I will look and get to the exact numbers. Let's see, eliminate one assistant principal position at Allegheny High School and add a 12-month athletic director position. Now, the difference there is that the athletic director would not necessarily have to have an administrative degree. That would be based on 12-month teacher salary, so we'd save in the second year approximately 32,000. We've already talked to the high school about that as well. We are eliminating overtime allocation for transportation dispatcher because they are now exempt.
Yes, by Fair Labor Standards Act.
And eliminate funding for a part-time school psychologist periodically because of need. We may have to bring in a part-time psychologist to cover special ed information. So once we, if you look at year one, what you're going to see after we have to take out those programs, we have a surplus of approximately 236,218. But. But if you go back to year two, you're going to see we're short approximately 55,000, okay? Now.
With a whole lot of cuts.
With a lot of cuts, yeah. Now, my, my recommendation going forward would be to take that surplus and, and to provide 125,000 of that to cover the board of supervisors 250 contribution in that second year. Then the other 106, 9,000 or 111,000 that's left would be put towards bus purchase, so we can stay on with our bus purchases. Now, certainly, that's our recommendation at this time. Now, remember this, we don't have all the information in yet from, from the state, so this can change based on information that we receive. We will have a, a discussion with our leaders in the community about this as well, and we'll know from there. Anything, you know, at this point, what we like from the board, maybe not tonight, give you seven, eight, nine days to digest this, is that when we come back at the 23rd, Ms. Best?
24.
24, is to provide us some direction on some things you'd like to see, knowing where our limitations are. And then, you know, we'll go back to the drawing board and redo some things in there, unless there's, you know, something you can share with us tonight that you'd like to see us look at.
If any of these positions, what we're looking at, eliminate positions, if those positions, so one of the nursing, left now, we would not refill that position this year.
That's correct.
Okay, we would just let that slide.
Yes.
Okay, but we're still 50,000, 5,000 short.
That's correct, but you know, a lot can happen, and we had a long talk about this, do we balance out, obviously, in the current that we're going towards, we have to have a balanced budget, we have, however, we'd have some flexibility in the second year, maybe some revenue would change from the state, it might change, so we would get into that. But 55,000 is within the ballpark, and we could go back up and eliminate out of the insurance, okay? I'm not saying that, but that's a possibility. We talked about eliminating a central office position. We had a whole bunch of different things in there to balance it out, but I got thinking, do we need to do that at this time? And we concluded that, you know, with, with the 2018, 19 budget, we'll balance it. With 2019, 20 budget, we have a little bit of flexibility. But we have to definitely look because if we suddenly want to add two teachers back and we want to add custodian back and we want to add this back, that following year, we got to include that in it, which puts us more in a deficit than we currently are.
55,000, that'd be pretty close, the big, the big watch out is going to be making sure the county sees what's coming forward.
Yes.
We'll talk through that within now, so we can.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's close.
And 26 million, 55,000, pretty close. I would say I've been through this about 12 budget, and normally as you go through, as though we've been on here two, three, four, five years, whatever, things will change a lot between now and get to the late February or March, as things get more concrete from the government, people look around in our division, decide we're going to retire, that's happened a lot. There's things that help us, it's just, we got to get to that point, it's our first reading. With that, with Craig and Gerald, thank them for working on this, I know that was a tough job, but it's just part of the process every year. So we'll see how it shakes out, we're just our first reading, we're a long ways off from anything solid, but a lot of decisions were made here, and the board will make more decisions up before it's fine.
Last year, this time, we knew nothing about the tech, because we didn't know we were going to get the loss of students fund. That didn't occur until after the general assembly's budget came out, in the House particularly. And so at that point, that allowed us to report. There are going to be some bills introduced by people, there's been conversation about the rural school coalition, okay? There was some discussion about that, about maybe providing additional funding for loss of students. So those things were made. As they come to my table, what I can do, as soon as I get the information, is share it with you all. Ms. Best, can we provide everybody with addresses for both Senator Deeds and Delegate Austin? And then you can get the information out. They will listen, and so making that phone call or, better yet, visiting them in Richmond, they're going to listen to you. The other part right now is I don't, they don't know the leadership in the House, who's going to be in charge of which committees? But, and I haven't talked to Delegate Austin since before the holidays, but he could be in a leadership position with a number of new people in the House. And so if not, he could be, if he's not a chair of committee, he could be a chair of one of the subcommittees. And if anywhere ends up, and that's more influential, and Delegate Austin's been great for listening to us and still seeing to our, our thoughts on educational issues, so.
And if the talks with the Blue's Home are successful, I know we're not going to build that back into the budget, but it would assist with the surplus.
The following year.
The following.
Absolutely, and we could fill it in for one year.
Right, I mean, not, not budgeted, but we would have a greater surplus to.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
To manage those costs the next year and decide exactly what to do.
Absolutely.
I think that's an important.
Absolutely, yes.
Piece to this puzzle as well.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Anything else?
That's it. I would encourage everybody, please, we meet on the 24th, if you want to come spend an hour with me to go over through this, I would like, I would love that. If you got ideas that we missed, part of being on a team is as diverse thinkers, and so if there's something out there that we missed, let us know. Again, it's not the budget I would like to recommend, however, it's also not the most important budget either. So I've been, been here, but I've been through worse a couple times, and again, I want to thank Mr. Rice and the rest for all their hard work, and you've got something for us, bring it here. And if I'm not available, Mr. Rice is available, and email me with thoughts, questions, we'll pick up the phone and call you, and this is a true team community effort. And something we have here in Allegheny, I've said this for now and three years, is the cooperation and the working together in this county happens nowhere better in the Congo of the county that's been in this year. There may be some places as good as ours, but none better. And we need to maintain working on that cooperation and working together.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. I'd like to see everybody on 24th, if you've got any questions or suggestions, we'll get to them. Thank you.